I give one of you guys.
All second.
Hi.
Fines one hundred and forty seven and the amount of three hundred and six thousand one hundred and seven dollars and twenty eight cents. We have other claims and the payroll claims.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Favor.
Hi.
Transfers and for the highway department. An amount of forty six dollar twenty two cents for bridge dues and subscriptions.
Motion.
All second.
Hi.
Have a bridge surrogation and we approve this every year. We have three covered bridges.
Is this to get the like the eighteen hundred dollars per bridge or cover the eighteen hundred dollars total?
Eighteen hundred.
Total or for each bridge? It don't matter. It just adds up to be nothing anyhow. Okay. Oh, you must. You want to make more than Aaron?
I'll.
Yeah.
Also. Hi.
Are we ready for the courthouse committee or do I need to skip that for?
Is Judge here?
So I think they're still in court. That's why I'm trying to get this there. We'll move on to the department heads.
Yeah, as the government. I was going to ask if we could use either the annex or the the commission meeting room or our pre-con meeting with Milestone next Wednesday for like ten. Milestone, the U S I, mentioned, councilor took platinum or invited us so.
So I can't use the annex. What time?
Uh, I believe it's eleven. So anybody would be interesting. I wanted to see what they have to say. This is for the Stray Town project, but meeting process. One other thing, I've been getting a lot of phone calls about uh starting up dust control as far as oil shots again. Um, trying to put some numbers together for people. We're finding out maybe that the calcium chloride isn't working quite as well as what they thought. But uh didn't, I've got some feelers out to other counties and a couple places on what would be the best way to do that. So if you guys are okay, I'd like to maybe get some numbers.
I feel okay because I know I get complaints of why, why we have to pay for our dust control in other beautiful counties not. Because well, like I had to pay to get that done. You know, but there's other people that, you know, on payroll, whatever, they're not having to pay.
Well, it's still, even if he chip seals, people would have to pay for it.
That's what I mean. It's my, I didn't know whether it's off sharing.
No, I'm gonna say a road in general.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Why do I have to pay for dust control with other people? They're giving their road pay or something.
I guess unfortunately because they live on, they don't, yeah.
So I'd like to put some numbers.
Some people chose that, some didn't. They were born there.
If it works sometimes, it's kind of written worked up or something, whether it be a hundred percent on the owner. Off sharing, however, it would be best good.
Okay. And. Oh, go ahead.
No, we're about halfway on the chips.
I've got several cars on the chip seal. And is the machine, was the part broke causing to drop too much gravel? Cause people, people are thinking that there's too much.
Now.
Okay. Okay, so it's working correctly?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's been rolled in everything. So.
Okay.
We do have signs on all counties.
Okay. I'll just have people, I'll just ask them to avoid those roads if they can. Cause it, I mean, I get it.
Oh, yeah.
The, you get somebody blow, even if you drive slow and be courteous and somebody blows by you, kicks rocks up, busts your windshield. I mean, I get it, but.
Want to talk to them also about how much it costs to park facility.
That would be awesome, you know? I know they did that a few years ago and it was.
It dawned on me like. Mount River to.
Honestly, if we had to do less chip and seal and do put that coating over it. It'd save a lot of headaches.
So.
And might probably last longer, wouldn't it?
It gives it about two or three years.
More.
Life expectancy.
Okay.
That costs long. Third school.
Okay, okay, thanks, Jason.
The other department head back there?
I want to say something about this. Well, where's our at? Anyhow, what's going on now? We had people that came here five weeks or so ago. It ranged, most of it pretty good. We had two, three, we found light bulbs in some of the bins. You know, people sold them over the years because they're open. We're going to be covered, but. They suggested bringing Johnson's in. Fortunately, we got two of them. It's completely plugged. Like I'm thinking better, they've been open since nineteen thirty six. With the crud stuff, so we're working on that. The stat guy's supposed to be here today to start on chimney. What you see, when he gets down with Johnson's in, then elevator people are supposed to be here today. But the main problem is we waited a month. I've been catching a little bit of heat. Uh, we can't get parts due after. So this is what I'm going to do. You don't like it, but they're going to bring in, we're going to take pictures of all old doors and re-putting doors in. Do away with the old doors on the outside.
On the elevator, you mean, or?
Yeah. On every floor. We can't get parts.
Well.
You gotta do what you gotta do. That's all part of redoing this courthouse. I mean, it all could be.
Yeah, they should have done a little bit.
The doors should have been redone then and.
What? Yeah, what you say we? There's no mice in here.
I say we, I just said, they.
It should have been redone.
Yeah, absolutely.
A compliant, I mean, I don't know how an individual in a wheelchair is able to pull those heavy doors.
They're not.
So we're going to try, we'll try and push it along that and hopefully you get the wheelchair a little bit fixed today too. That's what they told me, but it just. A lot. It will be so. After they're done with the stack, we'll call rentals and they. So I'm trying to get quotes on the doors. So just be prepared. It was, it's going to be one of these, you know?
Just like the elevators, it's impossible to get anybody here to work on.
Yeah.
We're small potatoes.
Thousands, but wait a bit.
Yeah, yeah.
What, what's the ballpark on the estimated cost just for, is it under, under fifty thousand?
I could be close to fifty thousand. I'm just guessing that I bet it. If I touch it, you know. My nothing touch it. We'll find out soon. I can't get it.
If, if we get an indication that it's going to be more than fifty, then we'll have to follow just a different part of the bidding statute.
Okay.
But under fifty quotes, phone quotes are fine.
So, yeah, well, that'd be, we've got TK elevator, the SR elevator. And Koma has wheelchair. So you'd almost have to go. I don't know. He gave the. See what's maybe. But we'll see, we'll see what they say.
Probably the only ones was turn a bit in.
Yeah.
Even if they'll do it. Okay. Thanks, Rick.
Any else back there?
Greg.
Hello.
Hey, Greg.
Okay, Daryl has completed the repairs that I M had put out there. He's got it seated. We get some good rain. I, you guys might have some rain out there. Maybe, I don't know. It hasn't right yet. It hasn't been very good. Anyway, uh, we still got the south ditch that has to be cleaned down. And then I've still got more to cut out there. I have burned up the clutch in County Highway. Bush, Rushmore. And stuff grew pretty quick this year and got about two, three feet. And so he's taking it off. He's going to get it fixed eventually. The skidster, I overheated it. At some point in time, it must have been hot too, but it overheated. It blew the filter on the hydraulic system. They had to come out, repair it, put it on the hydraulic fluid in it. That was a chunk of change, but and I'm trying to get it washed out and cleaned out now. But uh what I'd like to look into doing, working with the Jason Highway, see if I can come up with a more that would fit the back of their three tractor, the little tractor, like not a regular back, but a more finished type back, not just something that here. Vegetation out because I like to cut it and keep it somewhat decent, but it'd be a bit quicker instead of using a six foot or seven foot more. We've got thirty two meters. It takes a lot. So anyway, we're going to look into that and see if I can notice something, but overall everything's looking good. The repairs that Daryl made in the back and the saddle I ran, it come out really nice. It's easier to mow down. So it will be once it's growing, but uh I then will probably be out to take a look at it before too long. And uh I need to get, I'm looking for somebody with a regular hay ring because the grass was so tall, it's laying on top of it now. And it'll just end up killing it. So I'm going to rig it up and get it off there, which I can take it back and put it for you. Our borrow area in the backpack there, it's got just clay on the surface. So we're going to put a bunch of grass and stuff out there and churn it in, make it on top. So, so that's not a problem, but that's just the process we're going through right now. That's where we're at. We got a report on the wells. Roger, did you look at that?
I did. It's great news.
The one well is still.
It's great news. The chlorides are dropping significantly now.
Yes.
They were actually started to see, but it's gone by cap.
Yeah.
Hopefully they continue to go down.
Right. And I think when we clamp that ditch on the south there.
Yeah.
Get that water run out. I need to meet out there with you and Daryl. We got to come up with a plan. I cut it back so we could see it. So.
That's great.
Yeah, but yeah, no, it's the, the, the reports look good. Well, and that thing is. Understand it because that dish, you're not ponding all the runs out well, all around that well. So we need to get that stopped.
It's good.
Um, the judge prosecutor's here, but I'd like to talk to you again.
Sure.
So don't, don't go too far. All right. Thanks, sir. Prosecutor and judge. Come on up.
Here with our officer, William Lashaw in support of a matter that I stated.
Okay.
Okay. We, we need you to come up here so that we can actually hear you.
We can get your face on camera.
So it was, what now if we could have permission to then change the way that we enter the building and and then we could go ahead and start with our metal detector and now we're looking to get that uh a scanner for bags and whatnot, but um I don't know if you've seen a picture of maybe doing something like that to maybe so we can put entrance over the front of the top canopy. That's at the wheelchair brand.
So everybody would enter there?
Mm-hmm. Yes. And then we would set our, we would set our metal detector up downstairs and that, or you're downstairs and.
The only thing. Um, those steps, I mean, I, I'll go look at it, but are those steps kind of tight in there when you walk in that door and try to get around? But anybody, I mean, anybody in decent shape is no problem. And I guess if you were in that bad of a shape, you can take the wheelchair thing down. And there'll be always be an officer there, so. Okay. Forget it. I've answered all my own, but it's. Just keep talking, yeah.
The only thing I would add is I had indicated to Aaron that I thought there would likely be some grants that I could apply for that would assist with the cost of the screening as well as the canopy. And I do still think that, but the time for two thousand twenty four grants, uh, applications has already passed. And so that doesn't come for two thousand twenty five until this fall. So I know the bill's put a lot of time and energy into this and, and the prosecutor's been really great to support us. I don't, I can't say, hey, if you all would, you know, front the money and then I can apply for a person or anything that in fact I just can't make any promises. That the security in courthouses is a priority with uh the Supreme Court, we do have money available, but it just wouldn't be a point, right? At the earliest. So. But I think, I mean, I support it. It was, it's going to take some training, but I think that's a great idea since we really don't know where we are with any changes with, with our courthouse. Right. And so kind of we're going to uh be discussing on July eighth, we're going to have a joint meeting six o'clock to discuss renovations. Because obviously this building here, you know, we've come, a lot of work has been done so far. But what plans and everything, and they have thought about changing the interests there. So you know, what you're proposing, you know, just be like a temporary until they start their renovations. And you.
Right.
We talked about this besides the canopy, which isn't.
No big deal to move everything. You're English moving.
While and so we're not really proposing an extra change or anything, but it does address things in the, the short term rather than the long game.
And I think the main reason we didn't do this before, since we've had this scanner for a while is manpower, but now we have two guys over here all the time. It's taken care of. One can be on it and one can be up meandering.
I think just having this presence out there and, and you know, for everyone to see, it's going to be huge.
No, I, I, I support it. Uh, the setup of our building makes it difficult to have to ship it over there, but when you go around to the other, even adjacent counties, uh, you can go, I think it's upper Warren County, a scanner at least, and everybody comes in. At least comes in through one entrance. I think they go out through others. I don't think it's an issue here. Uh, fortunately, we're just in an age that we go. And also H two W's done a great job researching all this and getting it together to present us. Lastly, it'll be, uh, I'll bring it in here.
Thank you very much. Proceed.
But uh.
Todd, I'm concerned.
Yeah.
There's one.
So. We're kind of all brought to the head of, I've been a little Google search on our area and, you know, our surrounding areas. And just to give you an example, like in Danville, so I don't know if you've ever been to Danville, but Danville is, in Illinois is one of the, it is the most dangerous city. I want, I mean, you take a thousand people, you know, per, per thousand people. Danville is the most dangerous city in Illinois. Um, your chances of being involved in a crime over Danville is one in fifty eight. And you know, so that's why I'm saying, you know, we got people all the time getting trouble with drugs over here. We got to be in our courtroom. There, you know, it's like, we talked about before, it is all reactionary, you know, and it's, I have no way I know when somebody had a gun in our courtroom, in our courthouse. I, I find knives all the time on people. So.
Right.
I mean, you know, it's, it's just, we, we got to do something. I mean, it's, it's just getting dangerous.
Agree.
Thank you.
Keep pricing it together. We'll be back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Okay. Greg and Jason.
Yeah.
I would like you guys to just briefly speak on working with Roger and what you think about his, his qualifications, how much he helps the county, if you think he does. I'm not putting words in your mouth. You can specifically speak to the landfill.
I was just going to say, I'm the one that brought Roger here.
Yeah.
Roger and I met through Daryl and uh when we first met, we talked about it and then we met with I D M. His, you know, before with I D M is excellent. And so that's a good step for us because you know how far we're under the water with the landfills and we had to make fix strides to get that corrected. And we've done an excellent job. We're one of the better closed fills now that we're in good terms with him and he's hoping we can continue on for closure, but I.
Which.
I've had no problems.
Yeah. The issue that Rogers or Greg's talking about there is the commissioners twenty something years ago, when they, when they closed the landfill, was supposed to put a million dollars aside.
One point seven.
One point seven million dollars aside. They didn't, and this was an order from I D M. They did not. So when I then found out when we were going to recap it this last time that it had not been done, they were very unhappy with Fountain County. Very unhappy. And I don't think there've been many people other than Roger that could have convinced them that we're going to get this thing done and get it done correct. And here's the drawings he worked.
I can tell that that's not true. The problem with I D M was that it hadn't been maintained.
Yeah.
And then the problem came about where we were going to have to cap it. We're going to have to fix it. Roger came up with all the drawings.
They were very upset because that money was not set aside.
We had to, Brenda had to jump through a bunch of hoops when she was on her to get them happy with it. And we've got that established now. We're okay.
Yes.
So we don't have to build a million, but.
I, I know there are people in this county that think we're wasting money on Roger and in no way, shape or form is that the case.
As far as the landfill goes, he's been a godsend. I mean, his, his expertise and dealing with I D M with what we have to do as far as the landfill goes. Outstanding. And he's done a great job and I appreciate everything he's done for us.
Thanks, sir.
Jason?
Um, I think I met Roger back in two thousand nineteen, him and uh Karen uh came to the shop and was asking about our coal inventory that we somehow, you know, started that. Um, I went to Endo for a couple of years. I worked for Roger in the midst area. For different, five key different things. He's helped us. I mean, we don't utilize things a whole lot of sizing. When it comes to sizing pipes or having uh some drainage issues, you know, that's, that's what we're going to do, right? That's something we can't figure out on our own. That's what we, that's what we've just thought before. Uh, you know, we, we tried to get permits going. So, but we had broadband going in everywhere that we have no idea when they're working on it, where they're working on that. You know, something, I, I'm not, and I'm not talking like dry, like I'm talking about the tiddies, you know? For instance, we were going to go do cover bridge road where chips on last week. They had our floor completely tore up and we're moving down the cover bridge road. So we, we had to forego chips. And so, you know, working with him on the premise, I think is something we need to start doing. But as far as. I'm the same as very high. I appreciate everything that you sell do for us and I have no feeling that she's working for us at all.
Okay, thank you. Brad?
I had hired Roger to engineer our subdivision and he's doing our next subdivision also. And uh he's developing our stormwater plan right now because he's recognized that I am somebody who knows how to do things. And I found that, you know, he's, his charges are not excessive.
Right.
You know, that's on, that's from a private standpoint.
Right.
Public, but.
Right. And also kind of to throw in, um, we have had, not had a county surveyor since nineteen eighty. I believe the early eighties. So this county has literally saved. Uh, I guess you could probably go back and figure it out, but I would say well over a million dollars. Not paying benefits and a, and a a elected position. Now, we're the only one, unique again in the state. We're the only one who does not have an elected surveyor. What's an elected surveyor? Someone who calls a person like Roger when they have a problem. But we pay them to be the elected surveyor.
Well, Tim, you might have said, like, they're not necessarily surveyors themselves.
No, yeah, they are. Yeah, they're, or engineers. Now, um, there's been chatter out there too, that Roger claims to be a, a surveyor. He does not. When he came in, he was with his uh wife's family business, Deckard Engineering or surveying, and he did have a surveyor at that time, which was his brother-in-law. He does currently have another man he works with for surveying purposes. And um I can, I can do nothing but praise Roger for all the positive things he's done for county with our drainage ditches. Our ditches haven't been looked at or worked on for forty, forty years, I guess. So um once we get through some of this stuff, we're battling right now and we start working on drains. Um, that'll be a positive thing. So anyhow, I just wanted to dispel some of, most of the rumors out there that we pay Roger too much. He does this, he does that. Yeah. There's a lot of money that goes out to his company. But he does a lot of different services for this county. Just not, uh, the, the planning and zoning, he's done a tremendous amount of work. So anyhow, that's, I'm done with that.
It was a legal bring that by us that it is not on our tax statements and collecting money. How does one get that back on and how do we determine that there's money in the funds that they need? Auditor has those records if they're active or inactive and the balances at each. Somebody, since we don't have a surveyor, the auditor gets that, the, we got to pass.
What is the start name of the drain?
I think it's the Wilson Nixon.
Does that come out to Kelly?
Yeah, it does come in and then it's right nearby my house. And so they usually, they can pay to the auditor as far as if they're going to be collecting or not. Um, and then the auditor, Fountain County auditor responds. Right. And I know once it reaches a, reaches a certain threshold of fines, then we stop collecting. Is that how that still works?
Yes.
Okay, supposed to. And so a lot of times, um no fault. You know, farmers will do the work on the drain themselves and then information is not relayed to the auditor since we don't have a surveyor. And, and I think that's where I think the previous commissioners reached out to Roger to help update some of our trains because if you look at the map and you would see just straight lines, Roger was going to work on waters. I mean, you can probably explain that a whole lot better than I could.
Yeah, that, that legal train you were talking about was separated from the adjacent county. So we only just a part that is on us.
Right.
Um, I have to sit down with Kelly and go through all the legal trains and look at the funding that's available on each one of them. There's supposed to be two pockets of money, one for repairs and one for maintenance. And I don't think we have that. So we need to look at those drain by drain and try to separate those two pockets of money. Um, that drain, if it has issues, uh, all you have to do is just submit a request that the acting surveyor take a look at it. Um, and I'll go take a look at if there's issues and I'll bring it back to the drainage board, which is now the decommissioners, but hopefully someday.
No, no, we've.
Move it like to the board.
Yes.
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 So we'll bring it to the drainage board and we address it and they vote on whether they want to spend money on it or not.
Okay.
Um, you are one. Um, two days ago, I got a call again from Kigman. They want to start their legal drain again because they're having problems. And Troy Tubbell has a legal drain next to him. He tried to get the puddle drain. That was rejected, but there's a legal drain next to him that has problems too. So Colleen, we have.
There is two separate funds, Roger. There's an.
There are.
And a maintenance improvement's not broken down for ditch.
Yeah.
But the, I don't, yeah, it is.
Yeah.
So there are two separate things.
We'll need to take a look at those. Just make sure that there's money and not I just have to come to the drainage board and request that they reactivate the trains and just send notifications to residents that they will start paying the trains again.
Yeah, our neighbor, my neighbor asked me because they noticed on their taxes, there was nothing being taken out of the drain. So naturally they called me and said, do you know what's going on and why haven't we been charged for that? And I said, well, it could be a couple of different reasons, but one could be that there's money in the funds and they kind of stopped collecting so much. And I said, the other reason simply is that it's not been reactivated.
That's, that's more likely the case. You know, I think it's just been inactive for so long. And interestingly enough, I'm seeing a lot of the, the farmers or the people that benefit from drain coming back and saying, we activated, like you want for the public, why are we not paying taxes on those? I want to pay taxes because we need to get those running again. So I, you know, usually people say, don't tax me on anything. People, farmers are saying, don't we want these, you know?
Well, kind of the funds you can't give anything.
Correct.
But Roger doesn't talk about new county control, the Wilson Nation. They determined if we're going to collect them on and they notify.
Uh, we separated them.
Okay, we separated, okay. Can we be having a charge on your section of it and Fountain County has none of it? Okay.
Correct.
Most of the time. Okay, because at one time they were wanting us to pay them.
Yeah.
Like I said, this is.
No, we separated them. So whatever we collect on our drains, we repair our. No, we separated them, so whatever we collect on our drains, we repair our drains to the typical new line, and what happens from there becomes their problem. Uh Montgomery County separated a bunch of drains also, you know, they all kind of getting to the point where the collaborative drains are a headache. So we just.
You can see, Tukie County just did a major multimillion dollar project on their end. I believe it passed into the Wilson Nation on our end, so.
We'll take.
It's too bad we couldn't have collaboratively worked to continue that on. Get it.
We'll take a look at that, because if they tap on our end, if they tap across the line, then we have recourse to have some discussions.
I just don't want people to get hit with a really large bill.
Right. I mean, it is, it is what it is, the drains, some of the drains that are down in the wooded areas. Uh statute requires that one of the one side of the drains always open for maintenance, these drains are so covered up with woods, you can tell what the drain is really. So it's just been neglected for thirty years, thirty forty year oak, is a big oak, you know, so. We'll 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 be able to learn a bit more.
Okay, all of them, thank you.
Jenny's here.
Morning.
Good morning.
Because during three AM, we were able to purchase some new furniture for our renting rooms, so that gives us some excess furniture and um. It's an exam table and a wooden table. I didn't know how you wanted me to proceed with that, I did have.
And you.
See if you want to see them.
Yes, please, and you told me the wooden table was kind of a homemade table, right?
Well, I did, I mean, I'm not really sure, it kind of looks like it. But that's a ta- one of the tables in this was our exam table.
Yeah, if they don't have any any resale value, you can ask the commissioners to consider them. Surplus, junk surplus, and then you can you can dispose it, you can try to sell them, but you wouldn't, you can't sell them. And then you can, there's a disposal jump. I'll make a motion to for those two items be considered surplus, junk, junk surplus. Second.
All in favor?
I. Her her ability to sell them, junk is just the magic language to. Yeah. So we don't have to advertise to sell those two tables.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, yeah, yeah.
I'm sure there's some young man or woman that would love to have that.
Right, right, um, also, we are looking to, we were doing those preventative screenings, we're looking to maybe advance that. And some more uh possibilities of um availability, so um we're gonna go to the council next week. Don't say that out, I'm going.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other farmhands back there? Oh, Terry's here, sorry.
Well, hello, Sheriff.
Stranger.
Hi.
Yeah.
Soul County can go all the way in makes, so it took me down to forty-five, so we've been in contact with state on roads. So that's probably what we're gonna start picking up and making money from the state of Indiana, so that's what we're having. Everything else in jail's working good, no complaints, no problems.
Sheriff, I have an update for you on the jail screen.
Hmm.
Um, they ordered jail screen, it won't be manufactured, ready to deliver until October. Between now and October, the contractor, the contractor's gonna come in and start laying the secondary pipes that are gonna connect.
Okay.
Hopefully put the building foundation in place and get everything ready to where when the screen shows up in October. They're gonna set the screen, and then they're gonna build the building around the screen, otherwise they have to tear the roof off to drop it in.
Okay, so you mess up my uh parking lot, or is this gonna not affect it?
We'll mess up your parking lot.
Put pipes.
In for the pipes, just sections of it, well, it'll be gravel filled.
Okay.
Everything is done, and once they come in and they finish, they'll re patch the parking lot, or I don't know if the county will, so I don't think it needs to be re-asked. But we'll just patch where we uh.
Right.
Where we impact.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, speaking of that, we did a quote to have it sealed, and we're like eighteen thousand dollars. They had a hole, but both sides sealed.
The grass. Is that by state or Hessler?
That was, that was Hessler's there, we need, I need more of them for, so then I'll bring that to you guys and take a look at it, and then.
We can ask the contractor that's building it to give you a second quote, since he's gonna be there and looking for repairs anyways.
Who who's the contractor?
Uh, call him, it's getting.
For Cody?
Uh, yeah, he, well, he's gonna do the repair for the for the asphalt, so Cody can do the repairs.
He's talking about whole parking lot, getting a bid for the whole parking lot, and do the coating.
Yeah.
Oh.
They could do that. Uh, and.
And then, but also, I mean, hand you that, I mean, I've got cracks all the way through there, like it's sealed.
Yeah.
So it don't need to break the border or anything like that.
Also press it's a bit not a process, but does that stop?
Okay.
We can ask him.
Right.
Uh, I'll I'll put him directly, I'll put him directly in touch with you, that way you can make those determinations.
Okay.
And Vetersburg has contacted me about two weeks ago about the trash coming through from the jail. She is very upset, it's tore some stuff up, I know.
No, no, it is not.
I know, it's cost Vetersburg, she said fourteen thousand dollars. Oh, she stopped commissary.
Yeah.
You think you'd have a riot?
Riot, that's how we make our money, but I mean, that's what.
And that's what I told Connie, she'll she'll hold on, I did, she asked, I said, I thought, I think I might have said September.
Well.
But I'll call her back and say October before it's the parts even built, but they're starting.
Oh, maybe a lot, so we can't speed this process up at all.
It's the manufacture of the horse.
Okay.
It's just like, you know, the the ambulance, you know, they haven't been they've been delayed for two years, I haven't got parts.
Yeah.
It's no different.
All right.
Everybody blames COVID, I don't know when we're gonna stop blaming COVID, but that's the delay.
Anyway.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I know.
Um, Ken, I will talk to you after the meeting.
Yes, sir.
So just so you guys are aware, I had a child muster file agreements with the ACLU. Because he doesn't think ibuprofen is enough for his pain.
His pain?
Well, certainly, you know, it was in his head, now it's in his back, now it's this, now it's that, I don't really care, so. It is what it is, I get those complaints every day.
Yeah.
All right, anything else for me?
Oh, thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sure.
I can put us. I can get your signature on that easement that marks them in. It's okay, then, okay, I can see your signature.
Uh, the only thing I have is I would like to say again in a public meeting that. As far as the solar farms and things, a lot of misinformation out there on the on Facebook. And it seems like every month or so, we end up beating the same horse, you know, they're toxic, no, they're not. They glare, no, they don't, they produce heat, no, they don't. The best source of information, do not blink, leave Tim Schumaker, is on the Indiana dot gov website. So believe me, if it's on the Indiana dot gov website, it's been thoroughly looked over and investigated. Richard G. Luger Center for Renewable Energy, which was started actually in two thousand seven at Indiana University, has this question and answer. It's three pages, and it's gonna, it can debunk. Three quarters of the stuff out there now, I don't know, I'm going by what. The the state of Indiana has put out there. So, and then also, there's this vicious rumor that keeps going around that. We commissioners, being Brenda and I, are being investigated by the Indiana State Police and the Attorney General's Office. If we are, they usually contact the person that they're investigating and start looking at bank accounts and such, and there has been no such movement. I wish the person spreading those rumors on Facebook would cease, because. Until he has proof that the state event, the state police and or the attorney general says we're doing something wrong. He is providing false, and I know I'm a politician, I'm supposed to take it, but it's getting a little old. Um, so I. You know, I guess, I guess that's all I have to say. Um, Brad?
Yes, I think one thing that uh has given Roger a bad name, or people have said. The zoning administrator, and I called him the other day, I can be more notorious past, and I said, Roger, have you. Done an application or permit for any solar farm farm other than the Crossroads or the Dolphin in Attica? And he says no, so I just wanna let, there's a lot of people here, I think, that are south of town. Worried about that, that he could go ahead and do a permit, and I, and he told me he's not gonna do that, he hasn't done it. So I just wanna tell him that that is not happening, so.
Chad? Did you?
Why, I don't mind admitting of this.
No, 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 no.
This is our state miling upstairs, no, I just wanted to say um for Ken, if there's anything that the court can do to assist in. Um emphasizing the emergency situation that the court is facing with regard to the elevator and the wheelchair lift, I am happy to enter an order. Uh, I have a woman today that is having to go over to Wallace Law Firm and view Zoom for a hearing, she drove from Mississippi this morning, and she's in a wheelchair. So if there's anything Ken, that the court can do uh with regard to the bidding process and the fact that. From my view, from the court's view, it's an emergency, so of course, I've never had this many people on crutches in wheelchairs. And what's the amount of time as I have recently, but um I appreciate what you all are doing and. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department? I have a question, really quick, is there any ways to expedite the repair of the elevator?
Kelly, those companies, you're lucky even to get them here. From my ten years on this board. It is, they are in demand, and they'll go to Indianapolis, and if you can do a thirty-story building. Or you can do this. Hard, yeah, okay.
Uh, because I know I talked to some texts in the past, and they'll go, they'll work on one another's elevators, that's how. That's a shame, Norman, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Virginia.
My name is Virginia Shelby Bennett, I've been paying taxes in this county since nineteen sixty-one. I'm still paying taxes in this county. I now own about three hundred acres in Wallbush Township. Uh, I think all of the trouble would have been abated if. The council had brought this issue to the public before they decided that they would let the solar panels in here. Now, I live in Texas, and a few years ago, we had a storm that took out all of their solar panels. And froze up their big mill, so it didn't provide any any extra electricity. I'm just saying that in other places, when you have a company come in and and get a tax abatement. That eventually the taxes go up, and that concerns me, I know my taxes are going up. Because I am making improvements to my farm, and when the assessor sees that, he's gonna say, I need to pay more taxes. I understand that, that's the process. Uh, I I was listening to your drainage problem, and I'm not sure I understood all of it. But I did a lot of tiling on my farm, and that goes into your your county ditches, I assume. So uh, what problem have I caused you? I hope none, but uh anyway. Uh, I would like to know if the if the, you said the surveyor, but would the assessor. Uh, take that in consideration for your drainage problem. The other thing is, uh, I really think that the taxpayer should have been notified. That these companies want to come in and and put in place these solar panels. And then you could start from, start from zero and hook up, and you wouldn't have had all this confusion. I didn't find out about this until I came up to check on my farm, I did not know that that the county had allowed these companies come in. Before I even found out that this county was gonna let solar panels in. I was reading up on all that because I lived down there in Texas and solved those problems. So Tim made the comment that some of that stuff is on Facebook is false information. I'm sure that it is, I haven't read it, so I don't, I can't even comment on that, but I do know that some of that that's on Facebook. Is probably true, because I've read the science has proven that. This climate control stuff is for me, uh, pain. Thank you for letting me.
Thank you.
I I guess at this point, for me, when when I find that there are things going on behind. Sneaking, we're not notified to the public, I'm guilty of going up. And doing my patriotic duty and voting people, and both of you I voted. Never again. So when we find out that there are things going on behind our backs, everybody in government is under scrutiny, I don't care who you are. Whether you're a contractor or individual working anymore, that's you're now all under scrutiny. Until we vet each and every one of you by. If my corrupts anything, this is clean rope. Zero. I paid taxes here all my life, third generation in this county, which isn't much, nineteen forty-nine, not much. There's others been here longer. It is disappointing to me to find people that are just falling into greed in government positions. You're here working for me, for her, for him, not for yourselves. So until we vet each one of you out. You can look for scrutiny, can can continue, am I doing that on Facebook? No, you won't find me on Facebook. People find that I look at Facebook. And I do my own research, and I don't press anything that's on a government website that says any of this is safe. Show me anything that the government's doing for us currently that is for our best interest, it goes back to greed. And this, all this we have going in our nation and the world, it starts right here. All this garbage started in a local county, local city, and I'm telling you to stop it. I'm one person, it showed up today, how many thousands did it? And what did you think? And it's not the cops, they're not interested in government. These evening meetings meetings were set so that people who are working now could tell, I'm off work, that's the only reason I'm here. I've spent all my life working to pay taxes, for what? For things that I don't approve of, but I'm supposed to deal with that, and I do. I gotta be here to babysit, why? I go to work, my boss, I will see my boss all night. Why? I'm a dog. I'm gonna do my freaking job. He doesn't have to check on me. He doesn't have to babysit me. I'm here to babysit. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. For the twentieth, thirtieth, fortieth, fiftieth time, nothing was done behind closed doors. It was all done at public meetings. I'm sorry if you didn't know about it. We have had people backcheck this and everything else. Talked to Jessica Anderson down in off of Kingman Blacktop. She can tell you, she thoroughly went through it. All our meetings were public. There were people who put input into wind and solar. And there were obviously people who didn't. So your claim that we're doing it behind closed doors is absolutely false. I'm getting tired of hearing this stuff. We, we did not do anything illegal. We did not do anything.
Did you announce to the public and say, hey, this is what's going on? Did you go and say, hey, my constituents who voted for me? This is what's going in our county.
Well, we have public meetings, well.
Public meeting, yes, it's a public meeting, but who can show up? They're at work, paying taxes.
These are plan commission meetings, sir. They are at night, so that, that throws your theory out the window there.
You still work.
Okay, well, maybe at night. Well, you're saying day meetings, you were complaining about day meetings. These are night meetings.
There are day meetings and night meetings. There are people who are day shift. And they still work when they get off work.
And another thing, hold on a second, Kelly. Another thing is, these are private contracts. With private landowners, with private companies.
They're government subsidies, tax abatements, garbage, the garbage.
These companies do, right now, in the process, if we repeat and repeated, and the companies, both current customers, companies Dolphin and Ranger. Have came in and said, in public meetings, they are privately held companies, they get no government help. The government help comes in the next round. The people who buy the power, the people who uh run them after they're done developing. They get nothing. But the, but the, the next level does. So no different.
I get, I get what you're saying to the normal people. I get a little deeper on some of this stuff than you are.
Okay.
So I've done my digging. So don't feed me the lies that it's just this guy gets it. It triples down. The shit starts right here. And I'm telling you, from a personal position, we're done with it.
Okay, thank you.
I watched it, I watched it. Oh, those ones I were cutting. I went to the community, I said, I'm listening, I'm listening to people carrying on like the guy just got through. And everything boils down to communication. There's not been communication, this is my opinion, there's not been communication between the council and the commissioners and everything that I heard and looked at and listened to, it sounds to me like the the council is very slow in acting and not very uh, what I wanna say, not very uh efficient. Now they're really getting ahead, so they're getting ahead, but that's what I say is communication. That's all I got.
Kelly?
Um, I went to the planning commission and one thing that Campbell asked for was some concrete uh suggestions for the ordinance and luckily that day I watched a wonderful webinar given by the Indiana Farm Bureau. And it was a law firm out of Indianapolis, Jansen Law Firm. The attorney, Brianna Shore, her, her suggestion was that your county should have a um special bond that a company um issues for the county with an escalator in it. That would take care of all of decomishing um costs if something were to happen. That's one maybe, that's it. And I'm telling you this, I'm sure they're gonna bring it to you as well. Also, she suggested that um the topsoil on the farms are to remain on farms. They are not to be removed from the farms. Yes, it should be in the individual landowners' contract, contract, but it should also be in the stipulations that the county has for the individual properties. Um, they're finding that it's removed as to landowner's property. They got no right to remove that topsoil from the property. It can be stock filed because obviously they're probably gonna have retention funds or whatever they need to do. Or graded to make it better. Um, another thing that she suggested was to um there's such a lot on the topsoil, oh, um, before they even talk to the landowners and sign contracts, they need to come to the county and notify the county that they are going to be doing this here. And then that gives the opportunity for the county, whether, you know, if you have an ordinance that allows it, fantastic. If you have an ordinance that doesn't allow, fantastic, but it allows them to know, we notify that we don't have that here or we do have that here. And here's our ordinance and here's what you need to do before any contracts are signed with any landowners. Um, I think that goes a long way with what you're talking about. Um, those were the three big ones. But I think they took notes and that the planning commission, so I'm sure they'll bring that too, but I just wanted to let you know from me in case it gets lost in translation, so.
Thank you.
Your luck. Kind of like the one minute, one more further comment uh about years ago. Uh, the county notified me they were closing a road that came up to my property. Well, that hadn't been open for years, years and years. I don't know when it was opened last. If they could have notified me about that, why can't they notify me about something big like this? This is important. Just saying, I'm a taxpayer. Why can't I be notified that you've been approached by a new company?
They didn't have to notify, what Kelly was bringing up, you know, the solar companies coming in, notify.
I mean, we went from having no solar ordinance um in twenty was it nineteen or eighteen, when I got it put back together, the zoning board. Because the old board had disbanded and therefore we had no zoning. So had I not put the zoning board back together, it would have been the Wild West in Fountain County. We wouldn't have been talking about any of this cause anybody could have done anything they wanted. So what we did, we put the board back together. And we knew wind and solar was going to be um a big, big thing. So we had public opinion because, and mainly, again, just like it was, like it is down here in Wallbash. Um, it was over in Richland Township, they were wanting to bring windmills in from over at Warren County. Okay? So we had a group, probably thirty strong at one point. Come and say, you know, they didn't, they didn't, you know, like the windmills, cause you can see them forever and they're two hundred, three hundred foot high, blah, blah, blah. So we made that ordinance very strong against wind. And we, in my opinion, at that point, really, I mean, we've got to go you know, fifty fifty. There's gonna always be people who don't like what we do. That's part of our business. And that's why when you sign up for this job, you know you're not gonna make everyone happy. So in my opinion, and only my opinion at that time, but there was a board who voted to do this. Uh, we made it difficult on the wind. We asked the same group of people, cause they were the only ones showing up at the meeting. What do you think about solar? And they said, it doesn't bother us. It, it doesn't stick two hundred feet in air, blah, blah, blah. So we made it extremely easy to get solar in. So.
Ask the rest of the county about that?
Well, they had a chance to come to meetings. Yeah, I, I can't help it if people. Do I? I guess it's the same times every other year or whatever.
Same time every year, but I think there's a lot of publicity that comes out. Vote for me, vote for me, vote for me. Not vote for you anymore.
I know you're not, because I'm not running anymore.
In newspaper, public hearings or advertised.
Newspaper, I'd be a newspaper.
That is all we have.
And
relay that information.
And therein lies the problem with Fountain County. The northern part of the county usually goes Lafayette paper. This part of the county goes to Danville paper. This part of the county does the, Hillsborough does the Crawfordsville paper. Southern might do Park County paper. I mean, it's just so hard in this county to communicate anything. So.
I know for reality, so we have to use the newspaper that is within our county. So that's a problem. I won't argue with you.
Communicate to our constituents.
Well, people weren't interested in coming into the meetings.
Really?
I'm saying. When I was auditor, we had meetings other evenings, nobody came. That's a fact. And so then we have people coming, then we have day overtime for them to attend. So we change it. It's not common. There are some counties, they only have day meetings. That's it.
Oh, probably fifty percent of the counties only have day meetings.
I have a question. The city of Attica has an app that they use for all of their notifications that anybody can download it from the city of Attica. I actually have it on, just because, you know, usually I like to look at it. Um, would that be something you as the commissioners be interested in looking into?
I know, I've, I've reached out uh to get a information on two companies or communication to address, you know, what you were saying, like Facebook, you know, web or because we don't have an individual to monitor that, because obviously we can't rely on newspapers to get that message out, cause it's not moving.
And sometimes the time, the timeline does not make it to, so you know, the obvious, you do that, you.
And if you're not on that app link, you know, you can still say, why didn't you get it?
If you're interested in wanting information about, let me know, I can get it from Larry Bill. Um, yeah.
I, I agree. Um, you know, we have, we have a newer website and we're trying to put things on our website so that people can go to and download documents. They can see our minutes. They've been uploaded for years. I know I was uploading and when I was on there, um, and previously, I think Colleen had it through our website, correct? The, the website that we, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Does the county have no solicitation ordinance?
I, I thought we did, yes. There is one, what, per in the courthouse?
No, I think.
It's the whole one, and probably it needs.
But if it's a solicitation, then these companies shouldn't be going to homeowners, soliciting to buy their land or, or rent their land. We have no solicitation because of, mainly because of, you know, fraud and uh
Right.
towards seniors and.
Well, I know we have one for this courthouse because we see the salespeople coming in and bothering, you know, the curators offices. And I'm sorry, you had a comment.
I'm Sue Scroll from Dunham Township. And I, I have a question about the solar. Because I thought there was a meeting about a month or so ago and then I, I think it was even a joint meeting, the commission and council, and you voted to not allow any of those solar stuff to come in. Or even to be talked about for a year.
Yeah, that's true.
The first came in and we um, were those two. I produce myself.
Okay, so, so why is all this conversation about the solar panels now? If they're not, they're not allowed to come in or even talk about for a year?
Well, there can be no new uh permit, no new um.
No, no new application.
No new applications. The two that are currently in process of permitting. The only way that'll stop is if the companies back out theirselves at this point.
State statutes and once, once it's in play, it can't be stopped or they cannot, they're retroactive.
So where, where are the two permits that are in force right now?
Are they on that map? You see the blue and the orange, those are the areas.
Like if you wanna look at that when the meeting's over.
You can go there and get to supply.
Um, or uh Dolphin Solar in your area, Dolphin like the fish. Mammoth, mammoth. I had questioned myself after I said that. Um, Dolphin Solar. Make sure you don't get the company from India, Attica, Indiana, Dolphin Solar Attica, and that, there'll, there will be a picture of the map. And everywhere the panels will go. So you can see in reference to where you live, where they'll be. So, so that'd be the easiest way to do it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's actually a joint meeting on Monday, next Monday. BA, and that's a, that's definitely happening. I would, I said possibly. And then the council and, and you guys, okay, thank you.
Oh, it's in the courtroom too. I don't know how that's exactly gonna work. Have you ever, how do you sat in there and?
Yeah.
I, that's what I don't understand.
Isn't it sure?
Yeah, I guess.
It's eight, six o'clock. If the council makes that day at nine o'clock in here, yeah. And so we'll have joint at nine ditches. When we go to meetings. All, I, I already planned, I couldn't get out of, so. I have a question. Yes, there's a bit of all that. You, the meeting, the public hearing that you had called the test wind turbine, a time ago, did that probably, did you um announce that this, we're going to do, we're going to discuss turbines and solar or just turbines? Because I can see if it's just turbines, the crowd's gonna be there that just was wanted to talk turbines. So the solar people, anybody concerned about solar was not, it wasn't made known that you were gonna.
Right, well, no, we didn't directly reach out to them. They came to us. They came to the plan commission, the, the people. Connie Scott was the kind of the leader of that group.
Okay.
And they came, they came to the plan commission, cause they knew we had a plan commission. They knew, they asked questions. They, you know, came and and knew when our meeting dates were and they showed up.
You know, the, the representations from the people that didn't want turbine.
It was true. Well, and that's all, they, they were the only ones that were showing up, so we asked them. Cause they opposed the thing so much and they were like, you know, no, we don't have a problem with solar.
Would you ever revisit that ordinance?
I'm not on the board anymore, so I don't have to. And the commissioners, I mean, if the, if it ever comes to that vote, um, yeah, I'm sure that the, the I'm sure that it'll be shut down in Fountain County, locked solid, and that's fine. That's their, that's their right. But I'm also pretty sure that the state of Indiana is gonna take it over and it's not gonna matter what the county does.
That's what I heard, that's what the attorney told me and that.
Just like, just like I, I've, I've talked, I've talked to some people and just like the hog confinements. Locally, they used to catch hack on hog confinements. You know, even though you built a house next to this farmer's house or next to his land. People, and I get it, people get upset about that, but I damn took it over, so now the local officials don't have to do it anymore. That's exactly probably what's gonna happen. And you know.
She could be that, she is there, because the partner in that law firm testifies in the partners in Washington. And she is.
And she is, the rumblings she is hearing is that the federal government is going to actually take over and water any of this company or state. It's not going to be a county decision anymore. So, and that's just rumblings.
And the reason it is, the reason Indiana is so inundated with these is we're the fourth largest power user. I don't, and I might, I might miss either power user or power producer in the United States. And with all these Duke plants shutting down and things, they've got to replace it somehow. Do I agree with them shutting down these plants? No, I do not. Um, but I don't, I'm not the ones making the deals at that level. Is solar going to be a thing or wind in twenty years? I hope somebody get, comes up, some genius comes up with nuclear, that something this big can power Covington. You know, but until then.
Tucanyu counties, they wanted to put wind there, but then Tucanyu county said no. No wind. They wanted to come right in, to cross the county line.
That's the group that came.
They made it so restrictive here.
Yeah, that, that's the group that came and that's why it was made so restrictive. Here in Fountain County, when the board first kicked back up.
Our communities that don't even live in this county or this state.
Yes, yes. So, yeah, okay. Brenda?
May.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Very much.
Aye. Thank you.